January sixth, two thousand twenty-five Crest Hill City Council meeting to order at seven o'clock P. M. I would ask that everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag and please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Certainly, we'd like to take a moment of silence in honor and remembrance of our thirty-ninth President of the United States, Jimmy Carter. Not only for the work that he did as president, but more for what he did after he was the president. He was a man that tried to bring peace to the entire, entire world. And his humanitarian services for fifty years after being president was a thing to be very honorable and dedicated and committed to that, that resource. He helped out a lot of people. So I would ask for a moment of silence in honor of our thirty-ninth President, Jimmy Carter. And also, the city of Crest Hill had four World War Two veterans living in the city of Crest Hill. Unfortunately, on Sunday, December twenty-ninth, Don Lawler passed away at the age of ninety-eight years old. He was one of our four World War Two veterans, living in the city of Crest Hill. He was independent till the last couple of weeks of his life, living alone, taking care of himself, driving a car. Living in Caroline Lakes, involved in many organizations in there. He was our guest speaker for our Memorial Day ceremony in two thousand and twenty-two. Passed away on Sunday, December twenty-ninth. So in honor of President Jimmy Carter and Don Lawler, I would ask for a moment of silence for both of them. Thank you. Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Jennifer Methan.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazzal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kuhwal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the work session held on December ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion will be in order.
Some of.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazzal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson. Albert. Alderman Albert for the approval of the minutes held on December ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methan.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
You all have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion will be in order.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by.
Darrell.
Jefferson.
Alderman Jefferson. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Jennifer Methan.
Epstein.
Yes. I'm sorry.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
And Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Happy New Year. I do not have any agenda items tonight, but as usual, fire away with any questions you might have.
Any questions of city attorney?
I just have one comment. I just want to publicly thank him for making my retirement party Friday even more special by his magician appearance. He entertained us all and he was fabulous and that's really going out of your way. What a good friend. Thank you, Mike.
You're very welcome. My pleasure.
Okay, moving along to our city administrator, Tony Graff. Tony?
Yeah, Pat. You all have a copy of the memo. I'll start off with the kiosk we had in the city clerk's office in the front entrance. The county is going to be removing that. Mayor received the letter. The monthly usage was only about, the average is about nineteen people had used it. So they're going to move it to another location. Our wastewater treatment plant, we have been going through some new process has been recommended. And they wanted to develop a compliance commitment agreement, which was prepared by our consulting engineers and also working with our interim Public Works Director Julius. So the agreement was accepted by the I E P A. So we have three, three areas that we need to improve on. Two of them are, two of them are already done. They're working on the third one in regards to the phosphorus discharge optimization plan. And so they're preparing that plan and they'll submit it to the I E P A. Keeps us in compliance with our wastewater treatment plant. The outstanding projects at City Hall, with a lot of the staff taking vacation and during the holidays, we still don't have a final proposal for, for the glass. The restrooms, we are getting proposal in regards to not just the sanitary, not just the sanitary service could be placed, but also the drywall and everything else that they have to work on when, when they do that. So we should have some proposals together for that. The stormwater drainage pipes, we're working with the, with Julius and we should have some proposals. Be able to put together what, what we're going to need to do to change the damaged pipes out here for the drainage, for our stormwater. We did install, was recommended to install a panic alarm button. Probably, probably six, seven months ago. It became evident when we've had a couple of incidents in the area where we have shutdowns. And so for the employees themselves, also here, we now have a panic button. It just go, doesn't just go to the police department, it goes right to Westcom. So it's like a regular alarm system. So if we do have an incident and the panic button is used, the police department is automatically dispatched. Because we're, they're not always in the city hall. So Deputy Chief took care of that and made sure that he started to have training. And he's not here tonight, but we'll make sure we, maybe for the work session next week. Maybe the person needs to go through the training, it's going to probably be with, with the clerk. The Grand Prairie Water Commission, now the next board meetings is Thursday, we'll have an updated report. I know Ron's been working on numerous projects to get ready to go to bid this spring. So they're reviewing the bid documents, designs. I think we're looking at, how many bids we're going to go out for this, this, look at, you're preparing about seven bids?
Total project wise?
Yeah.
There should be three or four different contracts that get bid out this year for the Grand Prairie from Chicago all the way out here. The section here in Crest Hill, that's not to be bid out either, that's to be bid out in early two thousand and twenty-six with construction in summer of two thousand and twenty-six.
So we'll keep, Ron and keep us updated. The tech committee, the technical advisory committee has been working aggressively to get this project, keep it on, on schedule. Stateville, they didn't have the bid. I tried to get an update again today, what happened with the bid for the four buildings that they were looking to demolish. They're, they're under review and that's the only comment I was able to get off their website so far. So hopefully we'll have, we'll have an update with that bid. The Fire District facility, we're moving forward. The engineers and architects have dropped off their final designs. Working with them on the access road. So we're hoping to be able to have the Fire Protection District Plan Unit Development Project in front of Planning Commission, probably in March. Now they'll have their public hearing. We have forwarded the comments. The council has, has stated over the last couple of meetings, what the range, work with the Lockport Police Department, the twenty-five foot berm, lighting and other safety measures and sound reduction. So once we get those final standards and regulations, they'll, they'll be included in the public hearing. From the debriefing so far, work with the Fire District on the, the B L Duke Scrap Metal Recycling Yard Fire. We are putting together all the costs involved, from salaries to, we know it's two hundred thousand gallons was used. The Fire Department was able to come up with that figure for us. The other thing that was very obvious that we had communication issues with was our water department needed to have direct access to the Fire Department. It'd be a big advantage for them to communicate back and forth because we were using cell phones. Actually having the police department go back and forth. So we're working on a grant to get some radios. Public Works used to have radios in their trucks, but that's been many, many years ago. So we're hoping to be able to maybe get a grant, I think it'd be a big advantage, especially if they're out, they're out in the, in the neighborhood. For them to have direct communication to our police department and Fire Department. Job announcement, building inspector announcement. We had received some, some applications after Don Seaman went over and talked to Julia at Junior College. And they have a construction program over there. So a couple of students have dropped off resumes in the last, in the last week or so. So hopefully we can interview and see if we can maybe get, get a building inspector out of the junior college. The water replacement project, we're moving forward with that. We're getting, we're getting a little more progress in regards to getting those replaced. You know, the goal is for us to, once we get it down to a manageable number. The Finance Director has been working aggressively to get everything prepared for going to maybe a single month billing. And we need to have all the water meters in place in regards to that. So that's still on the table. Places for eating tax, we had a hearing the other day. One of the businesses was there. They did commit to the hearing officer that they'll, they'll be caught up in regards to their, I think they were two, two more months behind. And they, they have submitted their payments. The other, the other businesses didn't show and they're second violations. So we'll be working with Mike Steph, what are the legal remedies we could do because of non-payment of the taxes? Doesn't seem the fines to have any, any impact on these two businesses. Nothing new to report on the West Sanitary. We're, we are at sixty percent completion of the sanitary project over in the West Treatment. Nothing new to report in regards to the crime lab. We really feel like the next thing we'll, we'll get plans that'll be dropped off for just our review. As you know, they, they have, we don't have any authority over them, but they did say they would cooperate with us. And then the old City Hall project, we are coming up to what they call a hard deadline where they have to add for another thirty days. They got to make a payment of five thousand dollars. And I believe that date is January tenth, if I remember right. And they've agreed to, they're planning on bringing that check in. They're waiting for I D O T. Josh, I need to talk to you after the meeting. Because we haven't got approval of their access that they would like to have for their, for their project. But everything looks to be moving forward. We'd like to have the public hearing in front of the Planning Commission in April. Any other questions?
Well, I just wanted to ask you, I hope that when these panic alarms are installed, that the council is also shown where they are and how they operate because one never knows who might need to.
Yes.
Use that.
Right now it's.
To add on the one she.
It's a Wi, it's a Wi-Fi panic alarm, so it's not, it's not anywhere permanent.
Well, we have them right here, but it's been almost two years.
The old, the old one you had.
I have one close from me, between me and the mayor. But we were supposed to be trained on this and it's been almost two years in May and we haven't been trained on any of that stuff.
Well, those, the panic alarms that were here before, those were just, went to the police station only. The new panic alarms that we have now are direct alarms right to Westcom. So when you press that alarm, just like at a bank, it's the police department.
I understand, but at the, at a bank, everybody's shown where they are, how they operate.
Correct.
And told when to use them, how to use them. Because, you know, they're there for emergencies and the person that's instructed might not be there if everybody's uninstructed.
Yes, Deputy Chief's planning on doing the training.
He, he's going to be here Monday.
But we still haven't gotten training. Remember, we talked about it several times. What happened if there's an emergency, how do we, what do we use? We haven't done that.
We want to conduct some training as well for you.
Okay.
But he will be here on Monday to show you exactly how that works.
Another thing, Tony, that kiosk, kiosk that you're going to remove here, it just said that we never advertise it for the resident. Nobody knows about it. The one in the front from, the one you're going to remove? The kiosk?
The kiosk.
Oh, the kiosk. The mayor just got the letter, so I put it, put it in my report.
I understand, but when we got, when we first got it, it was never advertised to the resident, so nobody knows about it.
Well, they're the ones supposed to be marketing it. So I know, I know our clerks, the clerks up front, they would, they would tell people what they needed, that computer needed something for their resumes. But you're right, they talked about advertising a little bit more.
Yeah.
I have a question, Tony, regarding the places for eating taxes.
Yeah.
And the businesses that are behind in those payments. I'm glad to hear one of them is, is attempting to, to make payments now. But I have a question regarding the one business that has not paid the places for eating tax in over a year.
Correct.
Now, did, did they operate, were they given a business license for two thousand and twenty-four if they were never paid up on their taxes?
No, they did not have a business license.
What's typically the procedure for dealing with not only a business that not paying the taxes is one part of it, but operating over a year without a business license? What's the procedure for dealing with that?
You have to write a violation up for them.
Was that ever done?
Anyone that hasn't got a business license, they can go through the administrative adjudication hearing process, send them a notice that they're operating without a business license and see, we could start writing those tickets next.
Was that ever done? It's been over a year, it should have been.
I don't believe.
Caught and, and addressed.
I don't believe anything's been with a business license.
It's not fair to other business owners that pay for their license that.
Correct.
There's one that goes over a year. Who, who would that fall under to catch that and act on that?
Well, it's, it's under the clerks.
What's the mechanism, I guess?
The clerk's got to file a complaint for no business license. So we'll work with, we'll work with the clerk's office and try to get for two thousand and twenty-five. Anyone, I think the deadline's coming up, is it the end of this month?
Yeah, the, they were notified. The code enforcement and everything knows about it.
Yeah.
So you notify them via email or how does that work?
Uh, I believe the deputy notifies them by email.
Yeah.
And they're given.
I believe they, I, I believe, I can't answer for, because I'm not at the admin hearings, but I believe they were ticketed and sent to attend the admin hearings and they never showed up.
Yeah, we could, we could send update on, on who was ticketed for last year's.
I would appreciate that because it's been over a year. So they should have been getting notified, I would assume, monthly because the, the meetings are monthly, the hearing meetings. So how many of these meetings were they called to attend and not show up besides this most recent one? But again, that's over a year after not having a license.
We'll get you all that information.
Thank you.
Question, since we're talking about the places for eating tax and one place that has dinners and I don't know, you know, they should be paying it. Is the Italian Culture Club, they have a dinner every year, they have other dinners there. Would they also be, you know, should they also be paying for the eating tax?
Um, I'll check into that.
You know, because they do have more than one dinner besides their spaghetti dinners. And it doesn't come out of, you know, their pocket, it would come out of the people who are buying the dinner, just like a restaurant would be paying it the same thing there also. So if we could look into that, because I was looking down the list of places and they're not listed.
Okay. Yeah, I'll check on that.
Tony, any action on your agenda item that's on the agenda?
Oh, what? Oh, in reference to the cameras in the workplace?
Yes.
That's an agenda item. I did get some inquiries that there might be further discussion, council would like to have, it's on the agenda. So I would request a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to table this till the January thirteenth work session.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Sapiti, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin to table. Consideration of Cameras in the Workplace Policy, Employee Handbook Edition. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Uh, yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tony.
Tony, I have a couple of other things I'd like to ask. First of all, I want to apologize to Patrick, our new employee there. I know we had a meet and greet, I don't know how many of council was able to attend that the day after Christmas, but I think, you know, that, you know, I just want to apologize for that, you know, with the timing of that. I know we canceled our Monday work session, which was later. And if we're going to be having a meet and greet the day after Christmas, then I don't see why we can't have a work session before the new year. You know, I think in the future, we should maybe look into having that work session before the new year. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I'd like to see maybe that for this year, before the new year, have that last Monday, it'll be a work session. I know in the past, we've canceled, not had any, the last, but I think the year, you know, the last meeting of the year, we should have that work session before the new year. Then also another thing I wanted to discuss, unfortunately Julius isn't here, but you know, like with the mailbox damage, you know, that went from the snowplows. We've had in the past where letters were sent to residents about them moving their mailboxes back, you know, so far from the curb. And I had in the past, given to Public Works Directors, we had that there's a mailbox out there that's called a swingaway. So if it gets hit, it doesn't get damaged, doesn't break the pole, it swings out of the way. It's designed to do that. And it might be something to look into, why our Public Works Directors I've given it to haven't acted on it or, you know, done anything with it. But I think it's something that should get looked into, especially if we're getting this many mailboxes damaged. And that's it for now.
Okay.
Alderman Dyke.
One more thing I wanted to see about, for the next work session, if possible. We had been talking about Plan Commission and Civil Service and how they're getting paid. And so I was looking at ours and looking at our payroll, it shows that, it just says board salary and four hundred dollars. And I had called up Glenn today, you know, mentioning to him, you know, it's kind of, I don't know how to say it, but it, not too clear.
I don't know how to say it, but it, not too clear, because I know we're get, we get paid by ordinance for each council meeting, we get 10, so it kind of looks like we have a salary where we don't. So I'd like to see that brought into work session, look at that resolution, have Mike give his opinion on it also, and HR also, have them involved to see how that should be done, how we should get paid, because looking back over the last year, there's a bunch of meetings where many of us council people have missed more than, so many council meetings plus work sessions and gotten paid for all of them. And I know in the past, I remember there was times where you could see, like if I missed a meeting or someone else missed a meeting, you know, the others that didn't miss the meeting, their pay was more than ours because we missed that meeting. And this last year, everyone, for every meeting gets paid, whether they're there or not, work session, city council meeting, so I'd like to see that in a work session so we can get some definition as to how we're going forward with this, you know, we looked at the others, we need to look at ourselves.
We could do it at a work session, but I think we're preparing a memo so that it's clearly understood through payroll to follow the ordinance, the ordinance is in place.
Right, I know, but I just want to make sure, because he was saying that kind of like a gray area or it doesn't spell out each thing exactly, so that's why I would like to see it in a work session and the attorney also there to look at it with.
We'll take a look at it.
Further opinion.
We'll take, take a look at the ordinance.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, just back to the, the topic of mailboxes and when they're damaged, I actually emailed with a request to have that as an agenda topic for the 13th work session, so if you'll be able to bring up more of your information, Scott.
All right. Tony, are we going to have that on the next agenda, the mailboxes? You know, Zaza Homes in our world was the most damaged and we never got a report of how many we end up after a broader attention.
I know they replaced two, but I don't know how many others.
So we haven't gone there and done, like, a look of how many mailboxes? Because my understanding were over 12.
There was 12 that, the postman gave a number of, I think he gave about 10 boxes that he saw, so I know they went out and checked all of them. I'll get your report, how many were, were either replaced, repaired, or just temporaries were put up. Because the process for, we could talk about it at the work session, there's a process for the residents to get reimbursed for, you know, for their mailbox, but I know they went out and checked them all and made sure the ones that were knocked down, they did put temporaries up. And it's part of, part of the ordinance, it does talk about temporaries, but they have to be in compliance with the.
Yeah, quite a few of those weren't compliant, as I talked to you and Julius about it, because I know some of those people. But we did, are we in the process of training this particular employee on how to plow?
Yes, he went through, he went through a training after that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tony.
Okay.
All right, moving on to our public works department, there is a request for approval of pay request number 24 from Viscery Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and disbursement for a total amount of $1,327.98. Motion would be in order.
So moved as presented.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Albert for the approval of pay request number 24 from Viscery Construction Incorporated. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methan?
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman, good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have anything on the agenda tonight. Prior to the meeting, there was a question about the two signs, the one on Weber and the one on Broadway are city Crest Hill signs. Right now, we're waiting on ComEd, the jobs are 100% complete. Early in December, the, the ComEd crews were released to hook up the service and we're still waiting for them to hook up the service. So I contact them every other week or so, but at this point, we're up to the mercy of them, when they schedule it, then those lights will be hooked up, but otherwise, all of our work has been completed.
Did anybody find out about the mutilated box by Theodore?
I, I have contacted AT&amp;T, they're aware of it and it's on their schedule to be replaced, but no date was provided.
And then I'm not sure who this would be directed to, but since he's not here today, I'll direct it to you for now. I, I got a couple of phone calls from people who, when they were digging areas up for signs, the Crest Hill Women Civic League sign, they said, was trashed into a pile of stuff and not replaced, and I'm not sure why that would happen.
I have, I'll let me check on that, because they were stored.
Those all should have been replaced where they originally were, they cost the Women Civic League money to purchase them and they shouldn't be trashed or treated as trash, so.
Correct.
I would appreciate an update on all of them, there was seven of them.
I will, I will check into that, because I know that they were supposed to have been stored, but I, I don't.
Well, somebody said they saw it just torn down, thrown down in a pile of rubbish and unfortunately, I was at work and I did not see it until late that evening.
I will check into that.
Won't be a problem in the future, though.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thanks, Ron. Moving on to our community development, I'd certainly like to welcome and introduce our new economic development, community development director, Mr. Patrick Ainsworth. Patrick, it's a pleasure having you here, so I will defer to you if you'd like to make any comments to the public.
I look forward to saying hello to everyone individually and getting to know the city Crest Hill.
I am definitely learning the ropes today, thanks, Mike. Want to say hello to everyone and look forward to meeting everyone individually, and I will certainly say, this is not the same temperature I left when I left Arizona, so, but look forward to getting back to Illinois roots and helping, being of assistance to the community and Crest Hill. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
We just want to welcome you again and we're looking forward to this energy, we need the energy in here, so.
Welcome, I look forward to working with you, I echo what she said, I'm so sorry I couldn't make the meet and greet, I, you know, was at a very inopportune time for most of us, but welcome anyhow, and I will meet and greet with you personally.
Sounds good.
Welcome to the city, looking forward to working with you and looking forward to all your ideas and things that you bring to the city and make a big splash. Welcome, Patrick.
Thank you.
I'd like to say welcome. I apologize because I wasn't able to make the meet and greet, I had previously had travel plans that I couldn't get out of, but I look forward to meeting with you and working with you.
Thank you.
Do you have gloves and hats? I'm just kidding.
That was the first thing I bought.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Patrick. Moving on to our police department, our police chief, Ed Clark.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items this evening, I wanted to publicly thank, kind of a last minute thing, but we did a giving tree to the community this year for, for Christmas. Basically, it was some families that needed some extra holiday cheer, so the employees all got together and purchased presents through the schools, they told us what families could use a little, a little help this year, and so we went out and delivered them on the 23rd, it was, it was so nice, it was a nice thing to do and people were very appreciative, so I want to thank all the employees, they really came together and donated, it's the reason for the season, I guess, but, so thank you. And then March 18th, we have, we're going to be sponsoring a blood drive here from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, so if anybody wants to sign up and give blood, they're always, always, always needing it, so I think it'll be a nice event, but that's 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM on March 18th, it's a little ways away, but you can sign up now if you go on the Red Cross website, which is also on our Facebook page. It's all I have.
Chief, if you need any help that day with anything, please let me know, I'm now available, of course, as we keep mentioning, I love it.
You will get a phone call.
Thank you.
Yep.
Maybe I could make you some cookies.
Oh, that'd be great. Any questions of the police chief?
Yeah, chief, where are we with the Oakham Avenue bus lot there, with all those buses that are in disarray of, I mean, there's just buses that don't even belong there, that are from Rush Hospital.
Yeah, I know they've been using them for parts, they've been doing it for a long time, I'm going to get together again with Don and check and see what we can do as far as the business, they shouldn't be storing things there, but I will, I'll get an update to you this week.
Yeah, because that's been like there for well over a couple of years now and it's just an eyesore and we need to address it and take care of it.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Just to confirm, we are having on the next agenda, next city work session about Nap Road, right?
Yep.
I was told it will be the next meeting.
Yeah, we were going to discuss that and, and also a, probably a, a criteria that we'd like to come up with for stop signs.
So that will be next Monday?
Should be.
Yep, on the agenda.
Just to notify some of them, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for chief. I've been noticing a lot lately, a lot of semis that are parked in the back area by the Gas and Wash at Weber and Division. I know we can't probably go onto their property to enforce anything along those lines, because I think there's signs posted to that regard, but it, it doesn't appear they're being followed. Is there any way we could at least maybe reach out to Gas and Wash to see if they could do a little bit more monitoring of that?
There's definitely something in the works, we're going to see about potentially having an ordinance going that route, but that's, it's in the works right now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
There's already signs there, like, to me, it's like, I understand it's a, it's an eyesore, but we also have to remember these drivers, they drive long time, so if they take an hour or two to rest and, and eat in there and put gas and gavel a little bit, I mean, I don't see what is the problem, I just, the problem will be when they stay overnight.
Exactly.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
Because they're still bringing money to the city, you know?
And I'm in there quite a bit, so I've talked to them about that, and for the most that I can see visibly, most of those guys in there playing the slot machines, eating, some of them may be taking a break inside the truck just because they, they can't go anywhere because they've driven out their hours, so.
Right.
But I don't see anybody really, really like hanging around there.
Yeah, there's a lot of trucks, but the problem is, we don't want them overnight, we don't want them just.
Right.
Becoming a parking lot that they can drop off and go somewhere else and come back in two days, you don't want that either, and that, that could turn into that, so we're definitely working on it. Thank you.
Because most, most of them know that they can go down the street in Romeoville and sit over there by, I think it's called Scene 25, something like that, so most of them know that, the ones that I've spoken to, they, they wanted, if they had a long time to lay, they would go over there.
Right.
So I was thinking about this the other day, like, how do we control that? Maybe we're talking with Gas and Wash, it's going to be something like they can hang on their mirror or something, that they're not parked here, would they give them, like, can type a ticket or something, you'd be there for like two hours, so the police doesn't ticket people that they're only there to rest and be safe before they go on.
Right.
It's going to be a way like that, like, just like the way we do with our subdivision, if they're parked overnight, that means you are sleeping, you are, or God knows where you are. So it's going to, we have to find a way where it works for everybody at this point.
I agree.
You know?
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report, just to bring you up to speed, in regards to our 2025 liquor license renewals, all 39 liquor licenses have been completed and paid. The one that I notified you of on Renwick Road did make payment to, to local gov on New Year's Eve, however, the business was allowed to stay open, but they were not allowed to serve alcohol until everything was funded through the system and the banking system. And she did receive her liquor license, I believe it was last Thursday or Friday, so all 39 have been taken care of and everybody's in order. There are 19 video gaming licenses in the city of Crest Hill, they have all been completed and paid. We also have 20 tobacco licenses throughout the city that have been completed and paid, and we have one BYOB permit that has been completed and paid. So I just want to thank the cooperation of all the business owners, and I also want to thank my two deputy liquor commissioners, Dave Stengley and Mike Gale, Maribel DeHaro, and the treasurer's office, and the clerk's office also, for helping out with the places for eating tax. So everything is in order for 2025. With that being said, I will try to answer any questions that anybody may have. Hearing none, we'll move on to our city clerk's report, Christine Verchehoff, good evening, Chris.
Good evening, I have nothing to report tonight.
Any questions of city clerk? Thanks, Chris. City treasurer's department, treasurer Glenn Conklin, good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item is, I seek your approval on our list of bills issued through January 7th, 2025, in the amount of $627,774.77.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Albert?
No.
No.
Scott Dyke?
Thank you.
I will tell you.
That's my ventriloquism, working pretty good, you know?
I, I will tell.
I'm starting here, see how it works.
I'm going to ask that you please speak up, my right ear, ear has been plugged for about nine months and none of the medications or anything that I've tried to have done has worked, so when I'm in this room, I am having a very difficult time hearing anybody speak mostly to my right, but I think a hearing aid is in order very soon here, so please, I would ask for your cooperation, just speak up a little bit louder for me. Chris, roll call.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methan?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
I can hear it on my left.
It says right, Tina, it says right.
Right, so I'm having trouble.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right.
Next, next three items I have are information only. Regular overtime payroll from December 2nd, 2024 through December 15th of 2024, total We had additional regular overtime payroll from the 16th of December through the 29th, that totaled 200, excuse me, $277,643.91. There was also an additional payroll for Kim Linden on retro pay, which totaled $866.40. That's all I have for this evening, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions of the treasurer? All right, thanks, Glenn.
Thanks, good night.
Unfinished business, we have nothing, anyone? New business, anybody?
I do have a subject for new business. I was, I was out of town actually and I received a call from a resident, I want to say it's on December the 20th, I don't know if the lady was in, in war two or three or four, one, whatever, but they had an issue with water pressure and they were calling Public Works and couldn't get an answer. So I, after the first call, I called Public Works and I got the recording, person voicemail said they were out to December the 2nd, but this was December the 20th, I believe, and when I talked back with the resident, I just told the resident to call City Hall, hopefully, well, I never got back in touch with her, but I think City Hall probably answered.
Tony did.
Yeah, so.
I, I did talk to her, she called City Hall and the crew was out working over by Popeyes and this lady's address is over that area, they went over to her house and they were able to work out the problem. Basically, it was the water softener that was causing the pressure problem and they were able to show them how to flush their water softener, so they gave a little tutorial in regards to water softener, how to maintain it, and water pressure came back with no problem.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to get an update on that, so the problem was remedied. Okay, I don't have to attack Public Works.
Okay, committee liaisons on reports, anyone? Public comment, anyone like to address city council, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional, Stu.
Happy New Year, got a couple of questions. If I don't pay my water bill for a year, what happens?
Your water would be shut off.
So a business cannot have a business license for a year and they can still stay open?
This gentleman has been talked to several times, he's had several administrative tickets, the process is being followed. The process is being followed.
Okay, make it.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else? All right, Mike, there is a need for an executive session?
There is under five ILCS 122C 11 pending litigation.
Yeah, we skipped, we, we skipped. There's more stuff on the agenda.
I don't think this is working here.
More stuff on the agenda.
Mike. I don't think any of them.
There's not a word on the agenda.
He did liaison, he was the city council.
It's not loud, but you can hear it, it's on speaker somewhere.
We'll have to get Garrett Morrison here.
City council comments, I forgot about that one. We'll begin with Alderman Dyke. Nothing at this time, mayor, thank you. Alderman Methan.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Alderman Jefferson.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman is off.
Patrick, welcome again.
Alder Person Overland.
Well, I will comment, I just want to thank all the residents, so many, so many of them came in on Friday at my job to bid me farewell and wish me well and drop off, they gave me so many lovely little mementos. It was a very touching thing and so many residents, lovely residents of the city were there and I, I so appreciate it, it was very heartwarming and I want to thank Claudia, Claudia was there, Mike was there. It really meant a lot to me to see that kind of a turnout, to say goodbye, and I just wanted to thank them publicly because it was so, so very thoughtful, thank you.
Alderman Sapity.
Well, I just want to wish everyone a happy new year, welcome to Patrick, and congratulations, Tina, on your retirement. Enjoy it and good health.
Thank you, I hope so.
Alderman Albert.
Nothing at this time, mayor.
Alderman Kubal.
Nothing at this time, mayor.
Okay, there is a need for an executive session for 2C 1, motion would be in order.
So moved as presented.
2C 11.
Second.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an executive session for 2C 11 at 7:46, roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methan.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sapity.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, we're going into executive session at 7:46. All right, we're going into executive session at 7:46. Can you just tell them in the hall if they want to come back in?
I guess I don't know what I would talk about back then.
Come on.
She's playing a video game.
Pacman.
Pacman, that's what it sounds like.
This recording, recording system is for the birds. Good luck if we get a recording for tonight.
I'd ask for a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved as presented.
Motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please, Chris.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
And Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're going into executive session at 7:46. Thanks, John. Can you just tell them in the hall if they want to come back in?
I guess I don't know what I would talk about back then.
Come on.
She's playing a video game.
Yeah.
Pacman.
Pacman, that's what it sounds like.
This recording, recording system is for the birds. Okay. Good luck if we get a recording for tonight.
I'd ask for a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please, Chris.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session at 8:14. To our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
No action.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, meeting is adjourned at 8:14 PM. Thank you and good evening.